Good evening and welcome to the September 28th regular meeting of the Town Council. Nancy and Jackie have been excused for this evening, and if you don't mind, if you would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For announcements, the last date for the New Hampshire DES office hours in Merrimack will be held on Wednesday, October 4th, from 9 until 11:30 in the morning at the Town Hall in the Memorial Room. The office's hours are not intended for large groups or to replace the public information meeting, which will be happening on the 10th. The DES will be holding its next public information meeting on Tuesday, October 10th, at 6:30 PM in the All Purpose Room at James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, which is located at 26 Beavis Lake Road. Our next meetings are October 12th, Thursday at 7:00 PM, October 26th at 7:00 PM, our regular meetings, November 2nd at 7:00 PM, all here in the Matthew Thornton Room. That's it, I guess. Eileen?
Okay. The Parks and Recreation Department invites you to Abbey Griffin Park this Saturday, September 30th, for their final free outdoor movie in the parks of the season. The movie, Trolls, will be shown, and it will begin at around 6:45. Free snacks, hot chocolate, and glow sticks will be available for all attendees. A special thank you to the Merrimack Lions Club for sponsoring this movie. It's not nice, huh? Due to Department of Motor Vehicles software upgrade, the town clerk's office will be unable to process registrations or related transactions from Friday, October 6th, to Tuesday, October 10th. And I'd like to repeat that, please. So, there won't be any, the town clerk will not be able to process registrations or related transactions from Friday, October 6th, through Tuesday, October 10th. Thank you.
And all I have is an email that the Town Manager received from Clark Fries of DES, and I will read it to you because it is of interest to the community. "I believe you are aware that St. Gobain has already connected 16 of the 21 homes in Merrimack to the MVD, where they agree they have responsibility. St. Gobain is funding bottled water to the homes where we have identified they have responsibility, but they dispute they have it. We met with them, including the AG's office and their lawyers, on September 6th to explain why we're so certain that it is their responsibility and to discuss next steps. On MVD Wells 4 and 5 side, St. Gobain has funded the MVD engineering team to complete, and have completed 30% of the design and cost estimate for permanent treatments for Wells 4 and 5. On September 6th, Clark says he was allowed to attend a negotiation between St. Gobain and MVD based on demands made by MVD and a serious offer made by St. Gobain. A number of previous issues that had troubled earlier discussions were agreed to. Treatment for MVD 4 and 5 wells were discussed. The discussions were open and very positive. I am hopeful that a positive announcement could come out of these negotiations in the next few weeks. However, negotiations are ongoing, so nothing is guaranteed." The statement that, the statement is, that statement is what he is allowed to share from that meeting, but he did feel that real progress was being made. He says, "I'm hopeful that we will soon have a positive announcement on both the treatment for Well 4 and 5 and agreement from St. Gobain to provide a water system extension to the areas for which they currently dispute responsibility." And that was dated September 25th, Monday. Yes, Peter?
Chairman Harrington asked me to relay, at a meeting earlier this week, at the Governor's Meeting, Representative Dick Hench from Merrimack approached us and indicated to us that he would be sponsoring a House bill regarding the testing or evaluating of smokestacks emissions. He's indicated also that the other representatives from Merrimack, as well as representatives from Bedford, Amherst, and Litchfield are on board as sponsoring this as well, in a step towards creating some legislation to do that. And I would just like to remind everybody that on October 10th, we have that meeting at J-Muse, again, by DHHS and DES, as well as the Town Council's participating, and we're going to be looking for the other members, and I believe some of our legislators have indicated they're going to be there too, to update the community on the PFOA issue.
Thanks, Peter. Bill?
Along those lines, Finley, while I'm cautiously optimistic about the negotiations between New Hampshire, DES, St. Gobain, and MVD, one of the things that happened this week was the town of Bedford and 60-some-odd residences that live at the Greenfield Farms subdivision on the Bedford-Merrimack Town Line, received an agreement for them to be hooked up with Manchester Waterworks. The reason why I bring this to your attention is that it was identified that these wells in Bedford had PFOAs over 70 parts per trillion, I believe, in either February or March of this year. Here it is, it's, we're on the precipice of October, and 60 houses in the town of Bedford was able to get resolution with St. Gobain. Meanwhile, our community, as it relates to Wells 4 and 5, have yet to seen any, see any resolution as it relates to our wells. I think, as a ratepayer in the MVD, I think I've waited long enough for St. Gobain and MVD to arrive at a particular resolution. In that regard, I had outreach to Eileen to confirm that the town of Merrimack was a ratepayer with the Merrimack Village District, which she confirmed. So, I'd like to ask the council to, or I'd like to move that the council reach out to the Town Manager and ask her to engage council to see what the town of Merrimack's responsibilities are, or what are, what are, what are our legal options, so to speak, as it relates to the ongoing negotiations between St. Gobain and the Merrimack Village District. And I only ask for a specific opinion based upon what has happened with the town of Bedford, because I think it's grossly unfair that this community has had to wait 18 months and not have any resolution, whereas Bedford, relatively new to this process, relatively new with their concerns, automatically was able to get an agreement in place with the Manchester Waterworks. So, I would like, I'm moving that the council asks the Town Manager to reach out to legal council to provide this board, this legislative body, with what our options would be as it relates to those negotiations.
If somebody would like to second the motion, we can have a discussion on it, I guess.
I'm not opposed to your thought, I'm just wondering if it's in line, or if it's out of line at this point. I mean, this is a discussion on PFOA, and you're suddenly making a motion to commit the council to an action. Not that I disagree with your motion or the action that you're asking for, I'm just wondering if procedurally we're doing this the right way to be doing this.
Well, this is under the PFOA portion of the agendas, which is why I'm choosing to use this opportunity to make my motion. If you feel it's procedurally incorrect...
I just don't know an offer of better procedure to use, and so I'm just bringing it up, I guess, for discussion.
Would you prefer to have comfort that we agenda it on to the October meeting?
Does it make a difference, do you think? Is there an urgency to this, at your point?
Well, I, in my eyes...
I mean, I understand where you're coming from.
Where I come from, I think after 18 months, and we saw Bedford, like I said, relatively new to the dance, you know, the dance closes at 11:00, they walk into 10:45, and, you know, they're able to get, you know, get on the dance floor, and yet we're still sitting with our backs against the wall. I mean, that's how I'm rationalizing it.
Let me back up and second your motion, so that we can discuss it.
Thank you, council, I appreciate it.
Procedurally. Sorry.
I appreciate it.
So, I second it.
So, I've made my point, so I'm more than happy to listen to my colleague's opinion.
I get your desire, and don't disagree with it. I do think that there were probably other circumstances in Merrimack, the Longer landfill being one of them, that caused some consternation in having, the company had this obligation, they believed, to dig deeper into that. I don't know if that's what's put it to this point. I think, I don't have a problem with it, I think I'd like...
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, but the longer report was issued in March or April of this year.
Yeah.
So, they've had more than ample opportunity to review that particular report, like all of us have.
Yeah.
I just, I think we've waited long enough. If it's not the will for the council to deal with it tonight, want to do it on another night, I'm more than happy to do that.
Dan?
And, just my comment, I don't, I support what you're doing, but I don't want to do it tonight, in the sense that if you want to do this, it should be placed on the regular agenda.
Okay.
And then, bring me some facts. Just this anecdotal story of what Bedford did without knowing how or why, or what the circumstances were, is just not enough for me to go on. And I know you have a lot of problems with the MVD, but as you know, and everybody else knows in town, they're a separate legal entity that we don't have any power over.
I agree.
So, getting legal authority to do something with them, I don't, that's a dead end. I don't know what lawyer's going to tell us what we can do to MVD.
We potentially could be a party to any action between...
Well, that's open for a very long discussion with detailed information.
I agree.
So, tonight's just not the spot to do it on.
Well, that's why I was asking for Town Manager to reach out to legal council to give us that information.
So, I'd rather see it on an agenda with more information.
Okay.
I guess I agree with your sentiments, Bill, and there's, maybe there's just something, you want to go forward as, we're a town, the town itself, town government, and all our facilities are watering customers.
Correct.
And, and I guess we, what would legal council find out for us, is what I'm trying to...
The answer to your question is, I don't know, which is why I'm asking the question for them to say whether or not we have standing or not.
Okay, so I guess, I guess I agree with Dan, I'd rather, Dan, do a little more homework on it and then talk about it.
Okay. Is it possible that we could put that as an agenda item for October 10th, I believe? I'm sorry, October 13, October 12th?
Do you suspect, I don't know what's coming up in...
I didn't hear you.
I'm not sure what is coming up at our next meeting, if there's room on the agenda for this discussion to happen.
I'd be happy to put it on.
Very good. We'll do that.
And my second comment is, this community has been waiting for the results of the Community Health-Based Assessment Survey. They told us we would have an answer by the end of September. Technically, they've got a day, but I haven't heard any news that they're going to be prepared to issue any release, so I would like to ask that the council instruct the Town Manager to outreach to Department of Health and Services for, for, if they're not going to meet the end of September, and as my colleague, Council Albert, alluded to, we're going to be having a meeting in this community with DES on October 10th, and we know that invitations are going to be extended to the Village District and to Health and Human Services. I would hope that they would at least give us a date when those results can be released, because it's obvious that they're not going to have it released at the end of September. And I think this community's waited long enough. They surveyed 200 people, it's not like they surveyed 28,000 people. They surveyed 200 people to provide us with an epidemiological analysis of blood serums that relates to the respondents of the survey. They told us we'd have it the end of September. I don't think I'm being unreasonable, Mr. Chairman. I expected a result at some point this week, and we're not getting it.
I think you're correct, and the next meeting, I had, the Town Manager encouraged for the meeting to be held with the HHS, and that isn't happening. And an email from Clark Fries, I don't have it with me, he had put forward three, he requested another date for another hearing, and that was going to be the 27th, 30th, and 31st, were the three days that he was told that would be available to do it.
And that's fine, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with that, but I think the community deserves the opportunity to look and read, that way they're prepared to ask intelligent questions at that particular forum. And I think it's very unfair if they release the survey at that particular forum where people are getting a firsthand look at what the results are. I think we need to have, we need to have the answers ahead of time, so that the people in this community can ask informed and educated questions to Health and Human Services.
Would you be able to fire up that letter and see if, in fact, that's what those three dates that were offered to him were for, and if the results of the survey could be gotten prior to that meeting, I'd appreciate it. All right. Thanks, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, so, what I'm understanding now is they've definitely, they've said DHS said, "We're not going to have the results," is that what it...
No, that's, this email's had Clark Fries looking for further dates for another meeting. DHHS apparently isn't making the 10th, and so that's, you know, that's, it's wide open as to what it is, but that's why it would be good to find out specifically.
I think that was the key topic for people, and I think they should know that. And I echo Counselor Boyd's sentiments, and I would second any motion regarding us reaching out and at least finding, give us, give the community a reason why we don't have the results yet, give us some type of reason so we can all understand.
Absolutely. I don't think that'll take a motion, I think that, I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but, you know, I think that that's probably what we wouldn't be finding out, so, so we'll do that. Thanks, Peter, thanks, Eileen. Anything further?
There's a motion on the floor.
Oh, yes. Do you want to call the question?
I'm more than happy to withdraw the motion, if I know that outreach is going to go. I just, my patience is being tested right now, especially where they promised this community a due date. And if somebody, if somebody can't provide a deliverable on the due date, they need to be held, they need to be held accountable for it.
Sure. Or at least an explanation should be had.
Absolutely. So, I thank my colleagues, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Town Manager.
Anything further? The motion's withdrawn. Next on the agenda is a Highway Garage Project update, which, the only update is that the next meeting is October 5th. So, next, comments from the press and public, if anybody would like to address the council? Thank you.
Good to see you. Hi, I'm Wendy Thomas, and I'm here to give you an update of some residents that met regarding the water problem, which you were just discussing. The group is called the Citizens for Clean Water. We met September 19th at the library, and 11 people showed up with a mixture of people with private wells and who are on public water. Before I get started, there's just, for people who are listening, who are not familiar with this, we're talking about PFOS and PFCs, which are chemicals, non-dissolvable chemicals that have been entered into our water system. We're not quite sure right now where and how, but they seem to be connected with St. Gobain. DEH is the Department of Environmental Services, they're responsible for water testing, so if some people have had their wells tested, they're doing some of that. DHHS is the Department of Health and Human Services, they're the ones that are doing the blood testing. As Bill pointed out, there's 200 random blood sample tests that they've taken. The results should have been in by the end of September, technically, they do have one more day. There's a meeting scheduled for October 10th to go over the results. If there are no results, there can be no meeting. So, that's certainly an issue. The other thing is ATSDR, which is the Agency for Toxic Substance and Disease Registry, it's part of the CDC, and we were talking about that. They're working with the folks out on PES, PES Air Force, which has a huge contamination problem with the water, and it's the same sorts of chemicals, too. So, the concerns that we came up with is that there's a decided lack of support from There's a lack of attempt to examine or even acknowledge the impacts of PFCs to health on a federal level, as well as on a town level. There appears to be lack of physician education, even though DES had said that they were going to do that. Some people have gone to doctors and said, "Could you please check me for these chemicals?" and the doctors don't have a clue what they're talking about. There's a lack of blood test access, and there's a lack of asking for a community health study that will result in DHHS data that can be plotted and combined with DES data. So, as a group, we're trying to get our hands around this, it's a huge problem. It's not just cleaning up the water. If these chemicals have been in the water for a while, they accumulate in your body. The EPA has set a level of 70 parts per trillion as an acceptable level. However, on the same page, they, in 2005, they say that PFOS is a possible carcinogen. The state of Vermont has lowered their level to 20 parts per trillion, and the state of New Jersey is actively trying to lower their levels to 14 parts per trillion, so 70 parts per trillion in New Hampshire is really, really high. And we don't know the impact of that on our residents. I mean, we don't know how long these chemicals have been in the water. We have 21 houses, 21 families, 21 houses in Merrimack, where the rates are higher than 70%, or 70 PPT. We also, so we set some goals as, or we're just starting, we're getting involved, we're just organizing. On a local level, this group would like to get a community advisory board to look at each area collectively and formulate a comprehensive community response plan. We're looking for blood testing to be available for all Merrimack residents, whether, you can opt out of it if you want, but this is in our water for the health of our residents. We need to be tested, we need to know if this is affecting us. We need information to the residents of Merrimack about a potential water issue, how to test, how to filter. We have a well, now, we're outside of the area, we're getting my well tested this week, so I should have my results, I'll report back to you. There should be zero PFCs in my well. If there are any PFCs in my well, then that's an issue, because the only way it would have gotten in my well is through the water system from St. Gobain. So, for us, we already have a house watering system, a reverse osmosis is what we would need if we have any PFCs, and that's what everybody in town, if you have PFCs in your water, you immediately have to have house filtration and preferably reverse osmosis. On a state level, we're going to try to get the state to lower the parts per trillion from 70 to something that is more in line with the states that surround us, like Vermont. The thing is, that's not really going to help us, because it's kind of like shutting the door after the horse is gone, but at least it will protect us in the future, because St. Gobain is still in that facility, and so that could protect us in the future. We're also looking for comprehensive physician education. We want all of the physicians locally to understand that this is an issue, and that patients should be tested if they show symptoms. Some of the symptoms of long-term exposure include low infant weight, effects on the immune system, cancer, and thyroid disruption. Some of the cancers specifically are testicular cancer, pancreatic, and liver cancer. And there's a, there's a, there's a lot of anecdotal evidence about, a lot of cancer in our town, we need to see if there's, if there's any kind of a focus of cancer. And then, in the New York Times Magazine, an author, Rob Bilott, wrote an open article to ATSDR to start a national health study, and he included Merrimack in that, in that letter to the Agency for Toxic Substance and Disease Registry. So, other people are recognizing that there is, there's a potentially huge problem in Merrimack. We need to figure out how to do it. It's not just cleaning the water, it's also figuring out how these people, if they have gotten sick from these chemicals, how they're going to be treated, and how they're going to be kept safe. Just in town, if you're interested in getting your well tested, there's a fellow named John Lyons with Granite State Analytical. That's one of the things, people don't even know who to call or what to ask for. He will come out and he'll test for the nine compound list of PFCs. He came to our house, it's $465, which is expensive, but so is your health. You can also contact the state, and in some cases, the state may pay for testing of your well. If you have any information, or if you want to find more, or if you want, if you want additional information, go to the Citizens for Clean Water Facebook page, and we keep updating it with articles and what we find and that kind of information.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, Wendy, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your testimony tonight, I appreciate it. One of the things I want to caution you is, Deputy Commissioner for Environmental Services, Clark Fries, he's been in town holding open houses. Counselor Albert was able to attend one, I was able to attend two others, and one of the things that we've learned is when they're testing wells, they're looking for a specific fingerprint. They are able to test for a specific fingerprint, a specific marker, that would indicate whether or not St. Gobain is culpable or not for tainting a particular well. Some of the wells that they've tested have tested positive for PFCs, but they hasn't had a fingerprint. Conversely, there have been other wells that have tested positive for PFCs, but has had the St. Gobain fingerprint. Several wells in my neighborhood along Bedford and Joppa Road have that particular fingerprint. So, while there may be a presence of PFCs in people's wells, the state is going to, has the specific, I don't want to say technology, but they have, they're using, they have specific testing protocols that they're using for that specific fingerprint, so that they're able to identify whether or not a well has been impacted by air emulsions from St. Gobain or not, so I just would caution you against that.
Okay, I'll follow up on that, and I'll do some research.
Okay, thank you.
So, thanks. Do you, do you want this for notes or anything?
It could be great if you could email to me, or, if I'm the only one, I'll take it.
I can email.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Anybody further like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on. Eileen, I, I'm going to move you up unless you wanted earlier, I was going to move you up before the old business, would that work okay?
Okay. I'm just wondering if maybe the police might like to do whatever they're here for, because they probably don't want to stay here all night, even though it's fascinating.
No, that's what I was... That's what I was going to do, I'm going to put your...
Why don't you do them?
Yes, absolutely.
Is it for Karen? Yeah.
I was imagining so, yeah. All right. Next on the agenda is recognitions, resignations, and retirements, and this evening, the council would like to recognize Police Prosecutor Secretary Karen Costello for her 15 years of service to the Town of Merrimack Police Department, from October 7th, 2002, to September 27th, 2017. And if you could, I didn't, did you have anything you wanted to say, Denise?
Thank you very much for... Where'd you go, Karen? Come right here, don't hide, don't hide. Thank you very much for helping us recognize Karen Costello tonight. You know, a lot of people actually don't know this, but Karen started part-time in 2002 with us at the police department. She thought the grass was greener on the other side, and went to community development for a short period of time, but soon, back in 2003, came back to us full-time as a records clerk. You know, Karen came in both feet, she learned a lot of different things, went to a lot of different trainings. For those who don't know, Karen's responsibility started with our records management system, which she is actually one of the few people still who has mastered that. We kind of would walk in, and Karen would see that look on her face and know that we needed help, because navigating it sometimes can be extremely difficult. Karen, you know, was also responsible for entering the information for NIBERS, which we all cringe when we hear NIBERS, but it's the FBI's national reporting system, and that helps us, the information that she entered helped us continue to remain one of the safest states, cities in the United States, because she accurately reported it. So, thank you for that. You know, Karen, always willing to help us when she started, one of the, my most memorable times with Karen, this is really how she helped. We, people are trying to usually break out of a police station, well, we had a squirrel try to break into the station, and the squirrel got in, and Karen jumped up and helped, as I ran to the other side of the room, she helped up, and got up and helped us get the squirrel out. So, Karen was always willing to help, and, you know, that's really something that we appreciate. Karen always wanted to better herself, she actually attended National Community College and received her paralegal certificate, and that's a huge feat, for those of you who know, the law can be a very complicated area. So, Karen set her mind to it and did it, and when we had an opening as a prosecutor's secretary, Karen was an easy transition in, and she's been there since 2015, and it's been absolutely wonderful, so thank you. It's been a great 15 years, exciting, we've seen a lot. Thank you to Tony and your daughter Megan for allowing her to come to us every day. She always had a smile on her face. It's okay, no need to cry. Don't worry. Again, Karen, thank you from the bottom of our hearts, we really appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The council would like to present to Karen M. Costello in recognition of your dedicated service you have given during your employment to the Town of Marimac Police Department. Your dedication and devotion have had a great, had a valuable effect on the Town of Marimac, and we wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance October 7th, 2002 to September 27th, 2017, presented by the council and the town manager on the 28th day of September of 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I shall miss all of you dearly. It was a great experience. It really was. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I know, I don't think they're here, though, this evening. We have further recognitions, but two of our recipients weren't able to make it, and a third one we weren't able to contact, from what I understand. But I will tell you who they are. We, the council is to recognize Fire Lieutenant Tom Dalton for his retirement, on his retirement from the Marimac Fire and Rescue Department with almost 21 years of full-time service from July 2nd, 1996 to May 31st, 2017. And I guess because he's in retirement, he's out having a great time, because they couldn't make contact with him. Number three, item number three, is a recognition of Equipment Operator 3 Gary McGrath on his retirement from the Marimac Wastewater Treatment Division of Public Works with more than 21 years of full-time service, dated July 29th, 1996 to August 31st, 2017. And then our final recognition was to form Mechanic 2 Robert McGrath in recognition of his retirement from the Marimac Wastewater Treatment Division of Public Works with almost 28 years of full-time service, October 23rd, 1989 to April 28th, 2017. And we wish them all well in their further endeavors. Now, what I'd like to do without objection is move item number two under new business to right now, in front of the other items. So, Eileen, if you would like.
Unfortunately, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but you should have all of your material in front of you. So if you go to the second tab under new business, I have some changes for you, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to review the numbers before they went out to you. So if you look at the first memo, it starts with beginning fund balance as of June 30th, 2016. The number should be $6,449,358. And you can see that on this next page where it says 2016, and it gives that number. So, oopsie. So the beginning fund balance should be $6,449,358, which makes the additions to fund balance So the estimated fund balance as of June 30th, 2017, which is when we determine what our fund balance is, is $7,240,738, which now brings us over, slightly over, the 8% amount that the townspeople voted that they wanted to be. They wanted it to be between 4 and 8%. So we're...
Point of order. You're, if you're changing the fund balance from $6.6 million to $6.4, the estimated fund balance, shouldn't that go down?
No, because I changed the additions to fund balance as well.
Okay.
So it starts with $6,449,358, and then the additions are $791,381. So the estimated fund balance would be the same.
Okay, thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So before we get into what you might like to do about that, because the number is starting to grow and grow, I thought that I would prepare something for you to explain to you why that occurred this year, because that would be something I would want to know. So if you could do me a favor and pass, let me save one for myself, pass these along. As you know, we had expected that we were going to be running into some trouble this year because there was a very large mistake made in the valuation amount. And you can see that down at the bottom, the big red number down before the box. We were short $731,000. And because of that, we thought that it would be a very difficult year. But it turns out, if you look at the revenues, you can see that we had some really substantial unanticipated amounts of money that we received, and the largest of which is the auto registrations. So we received $833,000 more than we had anticipated. So that more than makes up for the 700 and some odd, $731,000 of a deficit that we had. So there were, as you can see, there are all kinds of ins and outs. We received more money, $92,000 more in revenue sharing. Interest income, as we know, interest is going up. So we had anticipated that there would be a smaller amount of interest on our, the cash that we have in the general fund. Insurance rebates, we had anticipated that we would receive some more money from NHMA, which we did not. Ambulance fees, we were lucky enough to collect a lot more than we have in the past, and so we brought in $164,000 more. Building permits, $26,000 more than we anticipated. Highway block grant, $14,000 more than we anticipated. Current use, that's a negative. So what that means is that we received less in current use than we had anticipated. And also for property, where I put property interest, what that means is that when people are delinquent on their taxes, they have to pay the 18% of the 12%. And I can't really speak for Diane, but I would venture to guess that the main reason for that is people are now paying on credit cards so that they don't have to pay the 18%. So we're going to have to, you know, we're going to need to reduce that amount for the future. So that comes to revenue, net amount of revenue over what was budgeted of a little over a million dollars. So in the expenditure, in the expenditure area, you, as you know, if we don't spend all of our budget, that's a positive as well. So the, both the police and fire department, because of vacancies that they had in their department, they had some pretty substantial amounts of money left over. So the fire department salary benefits and overtime was approximately $231,000 left over. And the police salary benefits and overtime was $279,000. And if you think about it, just one health insurance plan is about probably $27,000, $26,000, $27,000 a year. And those kinds of numbers can add up really fast, as well as New Hampshire retirement and those kinds of things. So we're reaching a full complement, where we've been doing some testing and, in both departments, and looking to try and get some people on board. And we're fairly close, especially with the police department. Another thing was vehicle fuel is, we paid less than we had anticipated by $66,000. Solid waste tipping fees, they increased by $82,000, which is a combination of an increase in the cost of the tipping fees. As you know, they go up a little bit every year. And also an increase in solid waste tonnage. So it's a combination of the two. And what I always heard from one of the public works directors that I worked for is that in good times, people throw away more trash. So you can tell that the economy is improving by your trash. So, anyway. The other thing is general litigation. We saved $54,000, and that's primarily because I do all the negotiations myself, as well as we didn't really have any too much in the way of lawsuits this year. Another interesting one that you'll find...
Did we save that money, or did we actually overspend that money?
Saved it. Under. Underspent.
So red is underspent, and black is overspent?
Yeah. Well, I had to, what I had to do, so black is good in both, in the revenue and the expenditures. So, and red means that it's over, red means that it's, wait a minute, I'm sorry. You're right. It should have been, it should have been positive. So, so anyway, the other thing that you will be happy to know is that we, streetlights, looks like that number's wrong, too. So they kind of wash each other out. So, streetlights, we saved $68,000 because of the LED lighting that you did a few years ago. So the number's a little bit off, but it's going to be around $500,000 in savings on the expenditure side. Add that to the million dollars in additional revenue that we brought in, as I said, primarily from auto registrations. And I used a number to balance, which is $30,000. And the, then your number for overlay is $731,000 for a total increase of fund balance of $791,381, which you'll, I modified over here. Okay. So, so what that does is, it brings us, so there's a couple of things that I would like you to do. One of them is, relates to approving this MS 434, which used to be called an MS 4. And I guess we know the reason why it's not called MS 4 anymore, right, Kyle? So, so anyway...
That's a dirty, dirty term.
It's a dirty, dirty term. So Paul has put in some estimates. What this basically is, is the estimates that we anticipate bringing in that are not tax revenue. So as we know, we take the gross expenditures, subtract out all those revenues that are coming from other sources, and then we subtract out overlay and add back for service credits, and then you end up with your amount to be raised by taxes. So he's prepared this, so I would like you to take a look at this and what you think of the numbers that he used. As you can see, the largest number by far is the motor vehicle permits and fees, and we have bumped that up to $4.9 million. And this current year, we brought in $5.1 million. So I ask you to be cautious with this, because, and I know I say this every year, but $4.9 million is a lot of money, and interest rates are going up, which means probably that people aren't going to be buying new cars. And it can be, the motor, we haven't seen this, we've seen motor vehicles go like this, but at some point, there's going to start going down and leveling off. So we're trying to be like mildly conservative on that one. And some of these other ones that you might want to know are, there are, there's a big number here under charges for services. It's on the second page, under the second, in the gray, right under the gray line, where it says $6,551. So this looks like a huge enormous number. Of course, it is. But what that is, for the most part, is the self-supporting funds. So for instance, the wastewater treatment plant is $4 million of that. And then there's special details and all those kinds of things. So they're all kind of lumped in together, and you will also, you would also see the exact same amount on the expenditure side. So it's kind of a wash. So, so there you go. We, another thing that I would like to recommend to you that's not represented here is that you consider bumping up your overlay. We have been put on notice about a particularly large, really large amount of taxes that are going to be disputed, although I don't really think that they, their excuses are viable. So, but I think that it might be a good idea to put a little bit more in there. And I don't mean to say a little bit, but maybe $100,000, because it could be half a million, for all we know.
What? Probably can't say.
I shouldn't be whispering at the council meeting, should I? So, so anyway, it's something that we would need to talk about in a non-public session, and then it would become public when the papers were actually filed.
Right.
Okay. So, and then the other thing is, I know that you would want to use some of the fund balance to reduce taxes, because the number has gotten so large. And I would just advise you to do it incrementally so that you don't see these huge spikes up and down. Paul has a number of $350,000 right now. You can see that down under the revised estimate summary on page two, where it gives unassigned fund balance, and it gives the $7 million, and then reduces it by $350,000. So it's certainly up to you what you would like to make that. Increase that, too.
Okay. Let me get Billy first.
No, go ahead with Dan.
Do you need, do you need a motion in a plan tonight?
Yes.
So is there a timing issue where you'd like to know where we stand for an answer?
Yes.
Thank you.
It actually can be revised, but the document needs to be in now. And we do have time, probably through October to early October, to make a revision, yeah.
Okay, Bill.
Well, therein lies the problem, Mr. Chairman, because looking at the document that was provided to us regarding the general litigation, which is reflected here as a negative, is all of a sudden is a positive, that's going to increase the way that I'm doing my arithmetic to fund balance, raising it from $791,381 to $845,629. That's number one. Number two, when I look at, when I look at that particular number as it relates to the MS 434, as it relates to the memo here from Paul McCauley, we have a fund balance here of $6,947,38. The MS 434 says $6,997,402, and when I add in the $54,248, I end up with $994,987. So from where I said... So, from where I said, I don't know what the correct fund balance is. And I would be very reluctant to support a document that I don't feel comfortable accurately reflects the numbers that have been presented here tonight.
I guess I would agree to an extent because the unassigned fund balance does not match what is, so you see 4297, 402, and 7240, et cetera. But I would like to point out to you also that the streetlights should be...
If the streetlights is a savings, then black is correct. That's how I would interpret that, Eileen.
All right. Okay. But what I would say to you also is that I worked on this today to, so that the numbers, although they're accurate, I'm not saying that they're not accurate, except for that one. I was trying to select the largest ones to reflect what the, you know, where we are. But there are a lot of ins and outs, 20,000, 30,000, 3,000, 1,000. So, even though the $791,381 might not be totally correct, either the 7297402 or the 7240738, which I didn't do those numbers, is correct. So, I understand what you're saying, but it's actually, you know, I can revise this one with some other, as I said, there's other ins and outs that can be in here. There's also a $30,000 number that is basically a balancing number. So, you know, it's totally up to you what you want to do. But it might not be, it might not hurt, since we know that the fund balance is $7.2 million and something, that you might want to discuss how much more of it you would like to use to reduce the tax rate. As I said, we have $350,000 in here to reduce the tax rate, and the discussion to increase that would be totally appropriate.
Yes. Dan.
So, my understanding, at least in a very close estimate to the number of $791,000, it's at least $750,000 added to the fund balance. That number is solid.
Yeah.
All right. Based on that, then I'd recommend the number of $350,000 that Paul McCauley put together as a recommendation for the taxed...
$300,000, as written on his memo.
For the, to reduce the taxes by $350,000 that was presented by Paul.
Paul wrote $300,000, Dan.
Actually, they're speaking about the MS 434.
Okay. I apologize. I'm just... Okay.
Can I just say something? You indicated that you wanted to use $300,000, and he bumped it up to 350 to put on this report. So, yes.
Can somebody point out where the 350 is, because I don't see it.
Okay, it's on the second...
I'm looking, I'm looking at the same document.
Mine is exactly like yours, his is different.
Okay.
Whose is different?
It's in the last...
I was going to call it a paragraph, right. That's, Billy doesn't have that on his?
Mine is 350.
Oh, wait, mine's 350.
Mine says 300.
Dan says 350, mine says 300.
I, again, I really apologize. I didn't have a chance to review these before they went out, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this till October 13th until such time that we're able to adequately address this issue.
And that is enough time for us, because if, otherwise, we could do something special. But if we can do it, then that's great.
Sure, it is. I just don't understand why it wouldn't be appropriate to discuss what more you might want to reduce the fund balance by.
Right.
So, whether it's 350 or whether it's 300, do you want to make it 500? Do you want to make it...
Actually, for me, our discussion last year was hinging on, the attempt, and that doesn't mean anything for this year, except we wanted to recall that when it came to this point. It's always been my desire for the stability of the tax rate, because when it drops down, like it did in 2005 or thereabouts, from $5 down to $2, and then back up again, it creates chaos that following year.
Yep.
And so, I'd like to tinker it down with the thought in my mind, to continue to chisel down a little bit this unreserved fund balance, would be my desire each year to do that, until we finally got it down to what I think is a rate of about 6%. And I think is, for me, it's the comfort zone.
I think a lot of us had said that as well.
Yeah, I agree. And so, for me, the 350 is suggested by Paul McCauley is the area that I'd like to be, but...
And I want to reiterate that as well, because we're not dealing with numbers that aren't totally correct. Again, the bottom line is, we have a massive overage of $750,000 or more. So, that's what he's basing his number on in making the suggestion of reducing the tax rate with the monies of $350,000.
Yep.
So, as I stated before, I'm in favor of that for tonight, to make sure that this gets in on time the way it's supposed to.
Right.
I can understand where your number's 300, our paperwork's a little off, but this little off is still, the bottom line is, we still have this massive overage.
Right.
That's not going to change.
Because if 6% is the number that most of us seem to like, if not all, we have a lot of space to chisel down before we get to that. Eileen.
The only thing is, I agree with Councilor Boyd that we shouldn't be prepared to make any motions on this particular document, because it is incorrect. So, and you each have different ones. But all I really wanted to talk about was what you, the two of you were just talking about. And from my own perspective, I would feel comfortable with $400,000 or $450,000. So, because you were going to do, you were going to do 300 anyway, and it's still, you know, it's still eking up. So, you know, obviously, you can do what you will, but I, from my own point of view, I would not be uncomfortable with 400 to 450,000.
Good, thank you. Peter.
Okay. Eileen, I'm looking at, and I don't know what, I guess I'll show it to you, and I'm seeing the effect on the tax rate at $250,000 will be 7 cents. So, is it safe, and I don't like to assume, but is it safe to say that if we made it $350,000, that it would actually be 9 cents saving? If I'm looking at the progression.
It would be, oops, sorry, it would be about 10 cents. So, if you take the, if you go, look up a little further and take the, because it rounds, there's all kinds of rounding. So, if you look at the, a little bit further up, you can see $100,000 is 3 cents, and then the $250 would be 7, so it's approximately 10 cents.
I mean, I'm in support of the $350,000 myself. I think Councilor Rothaus makes a great point. It's a way to kind of give back to the community when we have this extra money and the ability to do it. I'd also like to talk about that, and again, being the rookie councilman here, that there are some things we discussed in our retreat for the future. And I don't know if any of these funds can be put into capital improvement or so forth for projects down the road. I know that at one point, there was discussion that, you know, maybe four to five years out, who knows, that we might be looking at a public safety building. And I think that if we have some money to start to put aside for that, maybe we should do that and discuss what would be appropriate. You know, is that an inappropriate conversation to have tonight, or...
That would have, okay.
I think that it's not inappropriate to have the discussion, but to make a decision would probably be inappropriate. So, what I would say is, it's very important for the public to know that this is not an action that you can take on your own, and that everything like this would have to go before the public anyway, which is, you know, very important for them to know, that nobody can spend their fund balance without, you know, this body can't just go out and spend their fund balance. And just one more thing, we still have the $650,000 from the mall that's just sitting there.
And I guess that kind of follows up with my point of, let's at least begin the discussion to know that, at least in this person's, in my opinion, that we should be looking at maybe a public safety, a joint public safety building, a few years down the road. And I'm a firm believer, and if we have the ability to put some money aside and begin so we have a less of an impact of taking it out on a loan, maybe we should do that, obviously, and start to think about doing that over the next few years to lessen the impact. So, thank you.
Dan.
Just to address you, Peter, too, because your question's a good one, but it's also, there's only very limited things we can do. So, you're not allowed to do a lot of other things. And most of the things that you'd want to do, you'd have to put it on the warrant, you'd have to have a warrant article in that public hearing. But I totally support where you're going with that.
Thomas?
Yeah, thank you. I certainly agree and appreciate a lot of what people are saying here. I wanted to try and bring out a couple of thoughts. One is that $300,000 was already voted on by this council to put aside for tax relief based on our overage before we knew about this amount of money. And my understanding or my feeling was that we were thinking a third to a quarter of the amount that we thought was extra would go back at a year time, and that would allow us to spread it over a couple of years to avoid glitches in the systems and whatnot. Now, we're finding another $750,000 overage. And so, I'm thinking, you know, a third to a quarter of that is more on the 200 to 250 range, in addition to the 300 that we've already planned. So, if we played that game, and we worked with the money so that we're giving back the amount of money that we can safely have a little bit of a net to take us into the next years without glitches, I would look at more on the 400 to $450,000 number as the appropriate number. The 300 we planned in advance, and another 150 or more from this amount of money, that would still give us a chance to kind of filter it out over a couple of years, puts more money back to taxpayers, shows them that we're not trying to keep their money unnecessarily and things of that nature. But I, and I also agree there are other places that we really could use money. One of the places that I'm kind of fond of is the idea of getting new voting equipment, because with, going back to the three polling places and whatnot, some of our equipment is really out of date. And while that's not a huge amount of money, I guess, in comparison to $750,000, it's still a fund that we need to be considering in the future. So, just to throw out another idea of somewhere that, and parks and roads and culverts and all those kinds of things need attention as well, so...
For me, I'm more interested in the one-time, the voting booths, voting machines. It's great sense. It's a kind of a one-time expense, and, you know, as they wear out, I suppose it would be again. But it's, you know, I think I'd rather do the bonding on a project. I wouldn't be opposed to the engineering costs, maybe in that vein. I don't know if that would even be necessary to do that. But it's, I think on the surface, the one-time costing is where I would lean. Dan, let me get Eileen first, please.
So, the books are closed on the fund balance, so in order to spend any more money, you would actually have to put it in next year's budget.
No, absolutely. I recognize that. Dan.
It's just an excellent idea by Tom, and I think you could make it even cleaner by, I'm sure we would have a unanimous vote of if we made a motion such as, let's say that it's $150,000 for the voting machine, to take that from the fund balance and dedicate that to the purchase of the new equipment. I think it would be clean, and I can't see how anybody here would be against it, so...
I don't know that we can do that tonight.
Of course, of course.
But I agree.
But the money is there for, to make it a clean transition that way as well, I think would have all the support.
Eileen.
Once the books are closed, the only thing that you can do with the fund balance is to use it to reduce the tax rate. So, after that, you can always put it in the budget for the following year.
No, and that's, I think that's what we're driving at. This is something that if we were going to do it, it would be then. But you've, it suggested the idea of conversation about it tonight would be okay. So, okay. So, on the amount, is any...
Make a motion?
We still have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we do?
I made a motion to table about 15 minutes ago.
Oh, he did? And that's non-debatable.
Which is technically a non-debatable motion, but I've been quiet over here.
You didn't get a second.
Which is unusual, but I appreciate that.
Technically...
Oh, I'm kidding, sorry.
Yeah, I know. I don't know, it's fair. It's fair.
So...
I didn't hear a second.
And I would agree with that.
Well, you don't...
I don't think a table needs a second.
I don't think it does.
A table needs a second.
So, you can vote on it.
If it's, if, look, if it's going to fail, I will draw it.
Well, actually, I would just, I would like to give an idea to Eileen about the potential number, unless you're uncomfortable with that. If you're uncomfortable with that, then we can table it, but if...
Are we talking tax relief?
Yes.
I like Counselor Kenig's idea, I was, I agree, and the town manager, 450.
Before you table, if we could do that, if we could address that, I'd appreciate that.
They could be taken as two separate motions, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, but a tableing is non-debatable.
But the table is already there, it should be voted on, we just voted it down.
All those in favor of tableing the motion, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
5-0-0, so, 0-5-0. So, the tableing motion failed, obviously. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we take $450,000 from fund balance and put it towards rate relief to the community of Merrimack.
Offsetting the property tax rate.
To lower the property tax rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's 13 cents, according to the little graph that Eileen put together.
Okay, and that's a motion by Councilor Boyd, seconded by Tom Kenig. Any more discussion on your motion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing further? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. 5-0-0 in favor of the motion.
Just one thing, I will bring this back the next time, and I'll be correct, so that you can vote on it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, motion to table the discussion on MS 434 to October 13th, 2017.
Motion to table.
I'm sorry, October 12th, 2017.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. 5-0-0 in favor of the motion. All right, thank you very much. Sir? I don't know, let me see.
Go back to it a little better.
Nope. I don't think so. The question was, Chris, were you here for a legislative update, or...
Maybe you were.
May I be excused?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, now we revert back to appointments on the agenda?
Yes. I have to find my... Actually, if we could have Chris doing his legislative update.
Well, there's no appointments, it's all public hearing, there's no legislative update.
We were completed with that. Yeah, I was actually, you're right, I was speaking to move into old business, but, so please, Chris.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Chris Christensen, State Representative. I'm one of, an eight-member delegation representing the town of Merrimack. I'm also chairman of the Resources, Recreation and Development Committee, which works, among other things, with an emphasis on clean water. And I'm the vice chair of the Clean Drinking and Groundwater Advisory Council, which Councilman Boyd also serves on. I talked with your chairman over the last couple of days, and your council sent us, sent the delegation a letter questioning a couple of house bills, the number, House Bill 463 and 485, so I'm primarily going to focus on that. But if you want to go into other matters or more detail, that's fine. And I guess the other side of it is, it's pretty easy to get a little deep in process. So, if you start glazing over, just raise your hand, and I'll try to see your hand and start doing something else. So, the letter mentioned House Bill 463, which is originally sponsored by Representative Byron from Litchfield. And it has to do with giving the Department of Environmental Services the authority to regulate and enforce emissions from air-emitting devices, mostly smokestacks, I guess, but could be others, so it says air-emitting devices. the water people, and then it went through, uh, Science and Technology, which is Representative Barry's, uh, committee, and, and they're the people that do air-type things. So the House passed that, we're very happy with the bill. Uh, when it got to the Senate, they amended it to put on a bill that, or parts of a bill that they wanted to push through faster, and they didn't, they weren't, they were incomplete in their work. They didn't put funding in it, they didn't put appropriations for, uh, personnel, there was just a lot of problems with it, and so the whole thing fell apart in the Committee of Conference, uh, because the House didn't want to back down on what we thought was a good bill and, and have something that was, uh, highly incomplete going forward. So, uh, we're now working on House Bill 485, which started out as one that would, uh, set in law minimum contaminant levels of, uh, PFOAs at, at 20 parts per trillion. And, uh, we had two, two problems with that. One was, uh, when it threw, went through my committee and went through the House the first time, uh, it, it passed overwhelmingly, but we didn't have the fiscal information. And, uh, there were other issues in the bill that we just mentioned about appropriations and hiring people to carry it out and, uh, other things like that. So the bill was sent to the Finance Committee, and with the House deadlines, uh, they had to retain the bill to work on it, uh, in a continuing fashion. So that's what, I, I was in a meeting today for that very purpose. We've got a couple of amendments drafted, uh, they'll be voting on those next week. Then we get a, an updated fiscal information, uh, from the Legislative Budget Assistance Office, and they'll vote on it again and make a recommendation, uh, to the House, it'll come to the floor in January. So, I, I'm very confident that that will come through, and it'll be a good bill. Uh, but it will add things like a toxicologist that we don't have on staff now, uh, and, and other, I don't want to call them minor details, I think they're, they're small in, in the big scheme of things, but they're very important. We also have a, a bill on the same subject matter, has not been fully drafted yet, but it, it's going to be on, on the same subject and maybe incorporate some of the things that, uh, have been proposed in, in several other bills and, and try and bring it all together for next year, so that'll probably be introduced in January. And that has been, uh, proposed by Representative Hinch, who is, uh, the prime sponsor, Representative LaRue, Representative Barry, and, and I, uh, will be cosponsors, as will some people from Litchfield and Bedford. So we're, we're focusing on that geographic area. We recognize that there are people over on the seacoast and over in Swansea who also have, uh, health concerns, uh, that need to be addressed, so some of their information is going to work its way into that bill as well. And I think, uh, some of the stuff that, uh, Ms. Thomas spoke about earlier, the health concerns, really need to be addressed, uh, from the Health and Human Services point of view, we're working more on DES. Uh, with that, uh, I'll be quiet for a minute, and if you just have questions or, uh, other details, we'll, we'll try and flesh that out.
Chris, um, thank you for your patience and being here with us and updating us. Um, are representatives, are you yourself or any other reps coming to the meeting on the 10th?
10th, yes.
Okay, was, that meeting's still scheduled, right?
Yeah, right now it is, that's
The only, and the other thing I'd ask is, and it's, it's become a concerning, um, issue for myself and obviously, a, a lot of folks, and I believe Counselor Boyd alluded to it earlier, is DHHS's inability to have results ready, um, on these 200 blood samples, and I think that was one of the big reasons these folks, uh, a lot of folks want to come to this meeting. Um, and I don't know on your end, I know we're talking about reaching out and expressing our displeasure, but is there something that yourself or the other, are, are just other legislatures, legislators could do, um, up at the State House to maybe ask some questions, why, why can't we get these results? This is an important issue, um, with the DHHS.
I'd be happy to look into it. I don't have the letter or email that made any promises for specific dates. If I, if you could email me a copy of that, that would be very helpful.
I, I got that stuff, Chris, I can get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, and I, and I don't know if this is something in, uh, we had, just had a group from Citizens for Clean Water, and I know I'm going to get emailed, Wendy Thomas left me a hard copy, and I don't know if you want a hard copy of it, their concerns, um, to pass on to the, other of the legislators, or you want me to email it to you guys?
Uh, if you email it, then, then I can forward it to the others, yeah.
Okay. Maybe touch on some issues I know they expressed to us tonight and might be important for yourself and the other state reps to
Yeah, as I heard that for the first time, this, uh, and I'd have to go over it again, I think there's some, it, it's very difficult to be complete in a venue where you're going to come up and speak for two minutes, as opposed to something where you're going to thrash things out like you just did on the budget for, uh, an, a more extended discussion. So, uh, I think we'd all like to have a copy of that so we could, uh, have it in, in more detail.
Sounds good.
Because she, she touched on a lot of subjects that
Yes, she did.
Um, hard, hard to be complete.
Thank you.
Counselor Hubbard had the question that I was going to ask Chris, and we'll, we'll get him the information, so I'm good to go.
Great.
Thank you.
I guess, unless you have something further, Chris?
I'm sorry?
You seem to have something as, further, um
I was just going to mention that, uh, things are moving along. October 5th is the next meeting of the Clean Drinking and Groundwater Advisory Council. I'm also a member of the, in fact, I'm the chairman, of the Oil Fund Dispersment Board, which started some of this stuff, uh, 13 years ago, 14 years ago now, uh, based on MTBE and, uh, the problems with those contaminations. And that's, was the genesis of the funding that we're dealing with, uh, in the Clean Drinking Water Council. So, uh, I'm pleased to have Representative, or, excuse me, Counselor Boyd in, involved in that, and, uh, I think we're, we're kind of in a formative stage. The issue that I'm trying to get to is, some of this stuff takes forever when you go to court. That's what took 13 years. And I know people are anxious about, uh, the negotiations going on between DES and the MVD and, uh, St. Gobain, and St. Gobain is, um, now they're trying to hold their position a little bit, I think. But I haven't been sitting in on the negotiations, so I don't want to put thoughts in people's minds, but I, I know it's a slow process, but a much quicker process than trying to go to court and getting tied up and, you know, when the, when the court says, uh, sure, we'll meet next March, and then somebody walks in and asks for a delay or a postponement or whatever. It, it's a very slow process, and, uh, I do encourage people to be, um, patient with the ongoing negotiations.
Right, it's, um, you just hear the stories about how quickly it has moved, Bill was speaking about Bedford and the 60, whatever, uh, properties there that were taken care of, and I, I had chatted with, uh, someone about a week ago, and they spoke to Brattleboro getting filters in the school system when they didn't even need it because there was no contamination, which didn't make sense to me.
That's true.
And, and that's what she said, I, I, it's, it's peculiar to me because I don't know why anybody would do that, um, but, uh, you know, and so I, I'd have to, I'd like to see those type of pieces of information myself, but, uh, but it, it does seem like they're a little slow in getting, you know, getting a resolution here.
But, but then, your comment, and I apologize, Representative Christian, but your comment is particularly noteworthy because they were preemptive, because they said there was no problem, but they just went ahead and gave the school system a filtration system without having anything to justify them putting in a filtration system. They just went ahead and did it. I mean, that to me is, is telling, at least to mine, is it, it, what happened in Brattleboro.
Yeah, I, it's it, I, so I'm not sure what the reasoning is, it is, it is taking a while, and, uh, there is frustration out there, and
Yeah, some of the stuff, as I understand it, um, the approval for Bedford is an engineering approval with Penachuck, and part of that, I believe, is the number of homes in a geographic area. If you think, when we lose power in the winter, Public Service or EverSource goes and fixes the transformer where they can get the most people back online the quickest, and I think that's the, the approach that's been taken by, uh, the negotiations so far, that there's some engineering to do a lot in that one area, some of the stuff here in Merrimack, um, they're a little bit more isolated, or there are some that, as, I can't remember who've mentioned, I think Counselor Boyd mentioned about markers in, in the contaminants and so forth, uh, so they're taking some of those on a more individual basis. And I would say, this is speculation on my part, emphasis on speculation, that if I were doing some of this stuff, uh, I wouldn't want to release information one house at a time until the lawyers, don't want to do that, they want to wait until the whole thing is pretty much wrapped up in a good package before they start releasing little bits and pieces. So I'm optimistic that we're going to do well, but, uh, we have to let that
Sure.
System work itself out, and, uh, I, I appreciate the negotiating process and how it works.
Right.
I would just, I would just say in response to your comments, Representative Christensen, is that with the town of Bedford, with them hooking up to the Manchester Water Works, the engineering, I mean, you're looking at potentially going under, going under the FE Everett Turnpike in order for them to reach wherever Manchester Water Works is located, whether it's off of Brown Avenue or up, up along, uh, Ro, up along Rosedale Street, um, on the backside of the cemetery. Regardless, you're talking about engineering at a minimum that's going to be two miles, maybe more than three to four miles, where we're asking for filters on two wells, or we're asking for a filter on our blending well. To me, it's, 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 it's much more simpler piece of that particular puzzle as opposed to the agreement that Bedford arrived at with St. Gobain, which was significant engineering to get up to wherever the pipe is from Manchester Water Works. Uh, that's very frustrating from what I say, very frustrating.
Understood. We, we can go around this a couple of different ways.
We can be redundant, absolutely.
But, uh, the, how do I want to phrase this? The stuff from Bedford, even though it's taking longer to, or, or is a bigger project, if you will, the, some of the Singleton's individual locations in Merrimack are the ones that are holding up. The, the Merrimack Village District currently is putting out a product that meets standards. Okay, so as long as they're putting out a product that meets standards and have the ability to continue to do that for the foreseeable future, then the question is, the people with the individual wells and the filtration system for wells, uh, four and five or wherever they're, they're, uh, working on, uh, will come at a later time. That engineering really isn't, uh, as critical, if you will, uh, as, as long as the MVD's putting out a, a safe product. Now, there are people out there who think it isn't safe, but that's, uh, not the science that I'm reading.
Good.
I concur.
Dan?
I'm just going to remind everybody, um, that the 200 blood samples took a long time to get, that they, that the people in our own town do not treat it as an emergency because they took them forever to get their quota of 200. And they, when they finally got it, it was, it was delayed because of that, and then when the time that they got it, they said they'd have results about now. So, th, this is to me not a, a dire strait because it's so far, that's the fact. Took them a lot, took them months and months to finally get 200 people to volunteer their blood. So I, and may I remind you from the words of our person who already spoke, only 11 people showed up at the meeting at the library, 11 people. Again, I'm trying to understand where the, the hypersensitivity of it all is coming from. Thank you.
Good points.
Anything further? Counselor said? I guess we're good.
Thank you very much, have a good evening. Thanks, Chris.
And thank you for waiting.
Thank you, Chris, we appreciate it.
All right, um, the town manager had to, had to leave.
Oh, she did, huh?
Okay. If you, if you would like to, Tom, Tom will offer the town manager's report, thank you.
From the town manager's report, work has begun on the renovations and constructions at the former Shaw's Plaza. Again, specific tenants are not known at this time, but the department will announce them as soon as we are informed and able to release that information. Additionally, the planning board will have a preliminary traffic meeting with the developers proposing multifamily residential development on Executive Park Drive on October 17th at 7:00 PM. The applicant has not yet formally filed an application for a site plan, but wishes to engage the board and the public in a discussion of potential mitigation strategies for the traffic impacts of the potential development. Staff anticipates that the developer will make a final decision on filing a formal application or not shortly following this meeting. Uh, it should be noted that a preliminary design review meeting, uh, will be publicly noticed, uh, but it's tentatively planned for the 17th, uh, and is a non-binding discussion. Any feedback from the planning board during that design review meeting is only advisory until a formal application is submitted and in the public hearing process.
Thank you, Tom. All right, uh, there's no, nothing on the consent agenda, so first item under old business is the town council to consider, uh, the acceptance of recommended changes to chapters 11, 79, 139, 158, and 178 of the town code pursuant to Charter, Charter Article 5.
Move approval.
Second? A motion by Counsel Boyd, and second by Peter Albert. Um, would you like to discuss your motion, Bill?
The motion is moved.
Excuse me?
It's moved, it's self-explanatory.
All right, well, there's a couple of things
It's moving acceptance. It, I've read through it, it, there's nothing to speak to.
All right, well, Kyle, um, there's, there's no
Unless other councils have questions.
Our numbers
I would like to bifurcate it to the ones that don't have any changes versus the ones that do have changes.
Right. Um, uh, chapters 11, 79, and 139 have, uh, no recommended changes.
Okay.
Uh, 158, um, has a num, a few changes, and 178, we supposedly had a couple on that, but I couldn't find any information on it, so, uh, if I have questions on that, I'll ask them at a later time, but if
So maybe I misheard the motion, I'm sorry. The motion was for just those few chapters, or was it the whole?
It said the town council to consider acceptance of recommended changes to chapters 11, 79, 138, 158, and 178 of the Merrimack Town Code. I moved approval.
Okay, now I, I want to discuss it, and if you had nothing further.
I had nothing fir, I, to me, I have nothing to speak to, I'm, I'm satisfied with what's being proposed.
Great, yeah, Kyle, if you, I don't know if you have anything you would like to offer up, or we just, then please feel free to come forward. I, I do have a, just a couple of small things, I don't have anything major, but, um
Uh, council members, I'd like to have Jim Taylor and Sarita Croce come up, um, they're the experts on this topic. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but they're going to be far more informational than I would be.
Perfect.
Uh, but I'll be up here if you have any questions as well.
Sweet, I don't think I've met you before, so I've seen your name all over emails and everywhere else, so
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
So, if I could just formally introduce, uh, Sarita Croce is our Industrial Wastewater Pre-Treatment Manager. Um, she manages the program that's, um, it's a federal mandate basically, and protects the, uh, town infrastructure as well as the compost we produce by regulating discharges. She's also the smartest person I know, so I'm really happy she's on our team, not someone else's, so, with that, I, at your pleasure.
All right, um, I just have to find my pages.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
You can, while I'm digging here.
I thought I saw an email, um, earlier this week that said there were additional changes being made, and, um, that information would be available somehow to people that had already picked up their packets and didn't have it in their packets at that time. Can somebody clarify, was there changes, additional changes made after Monday, or?
I think, was it to the enforcement component?
I, I don't know what it was, I, I apologize, I had a lot on my mind lately, and I didn't read that email that carefully, but I know I don't have the changes, and so I'm hesitant to do anything at this point with this chapter. to do anything at this point with this chapter.
I believe, Jim, you sent out, you said there was one, that, one chapter or something that you missed in 158, I thought?
We did send to Becky Thompson some finalized changes, which you should have those in your, in your packet tonight.
When did that come out?
That should have come out last Monday, I believe.
Well, packets came out last Saturday, Friday, or something like that.
Yeah, I think it was in the packet that was Friday. In addition, we have a couple more small changes that we wanted to make you guys aware of tonight, so that we'll be fully prepared for the second reading. As we, we collect your thoughts on, there was a couple of questions that we had for you regarding how the council wants to proceed with some of these issues. Many of these issues are derived from expectations from the EPA and NHDES, so there's a lot of things that we can't change, it's requirements of our permit.
Right.
There's other things that, that there is some latitude on, that we were hoping to discuss tonight and get your feelings, so we could finalize them for the second reading.
Did you want to speak to those?
Sure, we can go one by one.
Well, we put, put together, Sarita put this table together of the proposed changes, so that it would make it a little bit easier for you to see, you know, what we're recommending, so if you want to go through each of these, if you have concerns or questions.
Actually, I don't know, I didn't know if there was anything further that you wanted to speak to on that. As far as going through each and every one, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
Do you want us to just go through the ones where we're seeking advice from you?
Yes, please. So I knows, if you could do those, Jim, that would be perfect.
So point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did anybody second my, my motion?
Yes, I thought Peter did.
Okay, so it's based on now how I'm reading it, the way how it's written in the agenda, since this has to go through several readings, to accept the documents is to basically accept, in my mind, as a, as a.
It's really to move it to a public.
It's really to move it to a public hearing, so let me withdraw my motion, so that Kyle, Jim, and Sarita can make their presentation.
Okay.
And then a more formal motion, I think, would be in order, if the council office wants to withdraw a second.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Okay, thank you very much. On 15835, that, on the proposed changes table, page seven, Drain Layers, we looked at that as page.
Page seven.
Uh, page seven on the, on the table that we presented to you. The term drain layer, over time, was, had become obsolete, so we're recommending that contractors be used in place of the term drain layer. This, this is something that was used, I think, back in the 70s and 80s, was a list that was kept in the building department, really wasn't maintained or updated. So there are qualified contractors that can do this work, that need to get the approval from the town through either Highway Department or, or the wastewater facility, so that we're just recommending, looking for guidance on whether that change would be acceptable. We think it makes the most sense to do that at this point.
Is everybody good with?
I guess I. I didn't follow what you were saying, I apologize. You talked about drain layers, is that a person who lays drains? Is that what you're trying to suggest that it meant, or?
The, the drain, I apologize for that, so the, the drain layer section would be for someone that's installing sewer from, say, a building to the sewer main and into the street, so installing a private sewer, essentially. And that's the term that's always been in the sewer use ordinance, so we're just updating that language to reflect drain layer to contractor that can do that same work, essentially.
So when I read that, I thought it meant layers like in our GP, G I S system.
Oh, I apologize, I guess.
You totally confused me when you started talking about the word contractors, and that's not in here anywhere, so I.
Right.
I need to better understand what it is you're wanting to do. So in the past, we called contractors a drain layer.
Yep.
Because he laid the drains to the private homes.
Exactly.
It's kind of like.
Probably a good thing to change.
Kind of like a pipe layer, carpet layer, something like that.
It's something like that, yeah.
It's kind of like a G I S.
That's exactly what I went to, I just apologize.
All right, so that, I, I agree with the change.
Is, is it just contractors, or does it need to be more specific than that, or?
I don't think it does, because when we look at the qualifications, that certainly goes into consideration of who would, who would be able to do that, you know, post a bond, you know, the certain contractors in town that do this work in other communities. So I think it's sufficient that we can make that determination at the time.
Okay. Excuse me for just a second, Diane, were you wanting to speak to us, or are you just waiting for chapter 11?
I'm just here in case you have questions or questions.
Okay, then let's, I apologize, there's no, no recommended changes or anything, so if you'd like to leave, I feel guilty as heck for having you, having to sit so long, so I apologize. So I, I think we're, I think we're all set. Thanks, Diane.
Thanks, Diane.
You're safe. All right, sorry, Jim.
Okay. Did you have any additional questions on?
On drain layers?
On the concept of drain layers.
No, are there further suggestions you want to bring forward? We'll go through all yours, and then I have just a couple of tiny things that I just can touch on.
We had, we had one of the change, and that is in the language for deferment to connect the sewers, I'm just looking for the article.
Because that's what one of mine is.
No surprise here.
You have a good memory.
So on page four.
I was going to say, it had to have been before, because I saw.
Under owner requirements, the proposed change is to change the fixed date of 1985 to 30 years for a waiver request. So this is based on state law, RSA 1478. One of the requirements to defer connection to sewers is if the system is older than 1985, so the problem with the fixed date, as you go out over time, becomes obsolete. So we look, we were going back and forth between 25 years and 30 years, and we were recommending 30 years. So it would be more restrictive than what the state allows, but to me, it made more sense to Kyle and I to go from a fixed date that, as you go out over time, it, it just doesn't make sense at that point. So that was our recommendation, was to go to a, change that to 30 years.
Okay, now, there's a couple of things that I have noticed, because that was one of my questions. I, I've always believed that if you have a septic system that is in good working order, and you can prove it and so on, through the process that you've suggested.
Right.
That it could last 40 or 50 years, I mean, it could go. I actually am now replacing mine, that was built in 76.
Right.
And, and it needed replacing now, but it, it was working fine and functional, according to my septic guy for all this time. So, so my, in, in our document that I have printed off in the ordinance, the change says 25 years, and so, but this is the one that we should go on, your changes in your.
That was, that was something that Kyle and I were wrestling with, is to go either 25 or 30 years versus keeping the 1985 date, and we thought that was the middle ground to, to go with, was the 30 years.
Okay. Can a system still be good for 40 years?
Obviously yours was.
But I don't have a sewer going by my house, so I never had to, you know, go through the, there's a few steps that you have to do in order to make that work.
Yeah, certainly depending on the soils in your, your yard, and how many times you pump the, the septic tank, and how many people live in the house, there's a lot of factors that determine how long your septic will last. They can last anywhere from, when I bought my house, for example, the previous owners had to put in a new septic because it failed, they put in a new gunnison system, it failed after 13 years.
Yeah.
Other systems like yours go longer than 30 years. Well, we thought, as we went back and forth in this conversation, we thought, what's the real purpose of the deferment waivers? And what it, what its real purpose is to protect folks who made the investment into a septic system from having to hook up and, and waste their investment from the septic. We think after 30 years, the septic investment certainly has been recouped, and it, it seems like a fair time to hook up to the, to the sewer system. If it were an ordinance saying, you have to change your septic to another septic after 30 years, we wouldn't be in favor of that. But because the public sewer is there, we figure 30 years is a good number.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kyle. All right, it's, if I, I'm going to actually just touch on the, approved by the health officer and public works director.
Yes.
Not a duplication of effort?
No.
Okay.
So we go through that process, and ultimately Kyle will, you know, make a decision on that based on all of the information gathered. So we do get the concurrence of the health officer as well.
Okay. All right. What, what further do you have, Jim?
The only addition we have comes under the pretreatment program, you know, Sarita Croce can speak to that.
So in, on page 12, we have omitted a addition to 15844, which was the allowance for monitoring waivers. It, it appears in your sewer use ordinance, 15844 does appear there as an addition, but it did not appear on the table for an explanation.
Okay. What, what was that number, Sarita?
15844. So if you go to the sewer use ordinance.
Yeah.
This is page 12?
There's no pages, but it's about this far in.
Yeah, it's about that far.
Okay, okay, if I'm talking page 12 on your chart.
No, well, that's where it would have been, I guess, if they had put it in the chart.
If I had put it in the chart, it would have shown up on page 12.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, sorry.
158, I'm sorry.
15844.
158 dash 44, monitoring.
So what that section does is it allows, under the federal rules, we're allowed to give monitoring waivers, to give businesses a reduced burden for sampling costs. So essentially, if they don't have any of those chemicals present, these toxic chemicals present, they don't have to analyze for them. They'll do it once, and then they don't have to after that, because they demonstrate it through the chemicals that they keep on site and their safety data sheets.
Okay. And there's no need to revisit as time goes on?
It's a federal allowance, so the federal government actually changed their rules back in mid 2000s, so I don't think there's a need to.
Right. Bill?
Okay, just a quick question, maybe Kyle's better adept at answering this, but did we have to add anything, I mean, I know we're still fighting the whole MS4 thing, but did we need to add anything to any of these provisions related to MS4s that are a separate animal altogether?
That's a separate animal. At wastewater, we have our own NFTs permit for the discharge out of the one pipe we have. The MS4 solely covers the stormwater pipes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
This, you asked, I, I just wanted to try to amplify a little bit, if I may, that this, this waiver that they can, that industrial users can get based on their own information and data, you said that there's no review in the, in the future of that, or is there any reason that they should have to tell you if they should pick up any of those chemicals, or?
So they do have to tell you on a, on an annual basis, this, this provision is for something that we called categorical industrial users, who have to renew their permits on a, typically a annual basis, and every year, they have to tell us what they're using and if there have been any changes. If there are, then we can go back and say, no, you can't get this waiver anymore, and now you have to go and you have to do all the analysis.
All right.
And then we also conduct two inspections a year at these facilities, and during the inspections, we take a look at all the chemicals that they use, the SDSs, and specifically look just for that provision if they've asked for a waiver.
So this, these are industrial users.
Yes.
You said category, you said something.
Oh, so.
Categorical users, or something like that, and I don't want to signal anybody out, but I'm trying to get an idea of what kind of a, of an industrial user you're talking about. So I can pick on Unitrode, which isn't in town anymore, but you probably don't know anything about them, because they left a long time ago, but it was a semiconductor firm. Would they have been considered one of those?
Yes, they would have been a categorical, industrial users. So that's the class that EPA has identified specific treatment requirements or specific treatment levels for. And it's a, it's a pretty big list, exhaustive list, the most common of which are your plating, your semiconductor.
Oh, okay.
And that's typically what we see in the Northeast here.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the clarification.
All right, sir, anything?
I think, I think we're good.
Good, all right. If nobody has any further questions, I think we're all set, Jim, Kyle, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I don't know, Bill's coming right back, but. Yeah, Counsel Boyd had to step away for a personal issue for a few minutes, he said he'd be right back. All right. And then, actually, we can, we may as well, the motion be to move it to a public hearing to a second reading. Somebody like to move that?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I submit, I move, to the town council to consider the acceptance and recommendations of changes to chapter 11, 79, 139, 158, and 178 to the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article 5.
And move it to a public.
And move it to a public hearing.
Second, all right, any further discussion? Tom?
Yeah, I just, as I was, as I was looking through these pages, I found, it printed differently a section called the Sewer Use Ordinance Proposed Enforcement Response Guide. Is that currently part of the chapter, or is this a new addition, or?
So, I push.
If it's bright green, it's on.
Okay, now it's on.
Thanks.
So the Enforcement Response Guide is a completely new document that's being introduced into the ordinance. The previous response guide was written when the ordinance was first approved, and since then, these response guides have become a lot more flexible in terms of offering of technical assistance and trying to work with industries more to help to arrive to conclusions or resolutions to make issues that may be present. The current, the new enforcement response guide is actually based on Narragansett Bay's response guide, and they did an excellent job, and it was approved by EPA. So if you take a look, I could not redline that, because it'd be difficult to review.
The whole thing is.
Yeah, the whole thing's completely different, so it's much easier just to read the new Enforcement Response Guide, and I can go through it with you as well.
Well, I'm just curious as to how far I have to read through, it gets, it gets kind of weird after a while when it gets into a table with about 87 billion letters.
Yes.
As to personnel involved, or something like that, so.
So how it looks is that for, for each level where you might have an issue, let's, let's take for an example, there's a permit violation. So an industry has a violation of a permit limit, and let's pick copper, for example. Our permit limit for copper is 1.03 milligrams per liter, let's say, and they have a, they analyze their wastewater, and it comes back at 5. So there are a number of different things that you can do to respond to that, one of which is to talk to them and say, okay, you've got a problem, can we help you fix it? The next of which is you can write them a notice of violation. If they still don't fix it, and they keep getting violations, then you can increase your enforcement action to an administrative order, and then you can keep going down the list. So in each little box, you have a whole bunch of different options for you, and that's all the letters. And then the little people, the other letters are the people, so pretreatment manager would be one of them, the director of Public Works would be DPW Director, Jim would be Assistant DPW Director, you have Eileen as town manager, you have town council in there as well, and I think the, one of the pages actually has a list of acronyms of what everything stands for.
Yes, it does. Okay. So this, you're saying you base this on one?
From Narragansett Bay.
Okay. And this becomes part of 158?
Yes, it becomes part of 158, it's an attachment to 158.
It's an expansion, though, of what we had before, or, I mean, you said there was one originally with the original?
There still is one.
There still is one.
It's a significant expansion, yes.
But you basically threw that out and replaced it with this.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it. I, I saw it in the back there, it was printed sideways instead of, it was printed landscape instead of portrait, so obviously there was something different about it, I just wanted to bring it out.
It's, it's a larger table, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks, Sarita. All right, this motion to move this to public hearing, there's no further discussion. A call question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It's 400. Opposed, abstained. It's 400. Bill Boyd had stepped out about five minutes ago. All right. Next on the, next on the agenda is Chapter 1, General Provisions of the Merrimack Town Code. It is, this as well as a first reading. It's the introduction of Chapter 1 pursuant to Charter Article 5. And this, basically, wanted to get to it. This is new, this was drafted by the town attorneys, and this, it's basically the acceptance of the Town Code. And then, the following eight or nine items are delineating further. How, I just got to find it.
What?
I have to find mine. I have a pile of papers here that's killing me.
It's easy to strom around. You want to see this?
Yeah. Yeah, the, they, the first basic paragraph is just the adoption of the entire code, and the rest of it explains what, you know, how things are supposed to come in order, what disappears, what doesn't with the new code, how to distribute the code to the public, and lastly, the severability of it, that if one part is not legal or right, it doesn't affect any of the other code. So, and this is a new piece inserted at the beginning as Chapter 1, General Provisions. So, if anybody has any comments or discussion on that? If not, then we can move it to a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Boyd, second by Councilor Koenig. Any further discussion? None? I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It's 500. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is minutes. The May 25 goal-setting report that we've received, I had just one thing in there, and it alluded to Tim Thompson being called the Economic Development Director, and I didn't think that's what it was.
This is Community Development Director?
Yes. So, that's probably a change, if we're allowed to change Rick's report to us. Otherwise, it all looked like what we did.
Okay. I had a question, I had a question on page, this one, starts out public safety buildings and transportation alternative program, right. It said the project can be divided into two, one for sidewalk repair of the bridge, and the other for the trail development. I was wondering if it actually had happened at this point. But I don't know that we have the people here to tell us.
I think we don't have that. I don't, I don't think it has happened, but you're right. I can't answer that question.
And under Future Needs on the next page, it talks about with a five-year look out of their staffing needs, and I thought maybe it should say look ahead or something, just to, lookout struck me as funny when I was reading it, but...
Sure.
So, look ahead seemed more appropriate to me, that they should look, plan out five years as to where their needs are.
Very good. It works for me.
That's all I, and I had the same question on the Economic Development Director.
Okay. Any further discussion on those? See none with those corrections? Do we have, did somebody move those? I don't think they did. Is there a motion on that?
Move the minutes.
I wasn't there, so I'm not going to...
Well, move the acceptance of the minutes with corrections, with the, only one correction, or two corrections.
Two corrections.
Second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, second by Dan. All those in favor?
Question.
Shoot. Yes, Bill?
The goal-setting report that we received this year is dramatically different from what we've received in the past, and I was just curious to know what everybody thought of it.
I think it's a little too brief, personally, but...
Thank you. Okay, I felt the same way. A little too brief.
It's funny, because I think our minutes are so voluminous.
Well, I agree. I just, I'm wishing there's a balance between the two, I guess.
Nope, I get it.
Okay, I just, I didn't want to, I didn't want to stand out.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good. So, we might, we might let Eileen know that to pass that information on to Rick for assuming he might be doing next year's.
Okay.
So, very good. All those in favor of the brief goal-setting minutes?
Aye.
Okay, who made the motion on it? I'm sorry. Tom, and who, you made the second. Okay. I wasn't anticipating doing this this evening, just so, because it must be very painfully evident. So, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
It's 401 with Councilor Boyd abstained. Next, the September 14, 2017 minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Thursday, September 14, 2017 Town Council Meeting Minutes with the following modifications. Page 5, line 28, it's not contaminate, it's contaminant. And on page 11, line 24, it's not creme line, it's crime line.
Creme line.
All right, I'm done, unless you've got more.
On page 11, line 38, I think it was Councilor Boyd.
Tom, Tom.
On page 11, line 38, I think it was Councilor Boyd and not Councilor Dwyer.
Oh, God, how'd I miss that?
That he and Councilor Koenig. So, if we could change that from Dwyer to Boyd, or Body, or, sorry.
Very good, good catch. Is there anything further on the September 14 minutes? See nothing? Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second, Boyd, Tom. Motion by Bill Boyd, second by Tom. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. 500. Comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. I'm sure, maybe this was going to be with everybody else, but Paul McCally, our finance director, lost his dad, and certainly want to extend my sincerest condolences to Paul, his family, his mom, I think we all do. I think from us getting to know Paul throughout the years, we know the kind of relationship he had with his father.
Yeah.
And he had a really, really good, really special relationship with this father from getting to talk to Paul. And I've met Mr. McCally a couple of times throughout the years, very nice gentleman, so I'm very sorry to hear of his passing. And I know for me, and hopefully for the rest of my colleagues, I thought some prayers could have to the entire McCally family.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And just a note, Mr. McCally, Paul's dad, was involved in the creation of that first medical arts building, which is now the police department, and it is a, he was part of the committee that brought, actually brought doctors and medical professionals to Merrimack.
Wow.
So, he's a longtime participant in this community.
That's great information. I never knew that.
To quote Johnny Carson, "I did not know that."
So, anything further? I apologize for the rough meeting tonight. It was, it was a rusty start, so Nancy will be back to bail me out at our next meeting. So, if there's nothing further, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Boyd, second by Pete. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. 500. Thank you very much.